Not much audience.
You don't want to talk too much disaster when I'm on here.
You don't have any.
You're into some more disaster.
So. Wednesday, May 9th.
Yep.
We'll call this planning board meeting to order. We have Tara and Marcia and Sarah and Laura and myself, Scott, and we have Max and Susan. So, you have, you've got an agenda there. What did I do? Okay. We have a quorum. Adjustments to the agenda. Anybody have anything for now that we want to change this around? Okay. Then we can move to citizens' comments. And as a citizen, because I was not at the planning board meetings that I missed, I want to thank you all and especially Sarah for leading the meetings that I missed.
She did a very fine job.
Great. So I resign.
At least one more month before we get to the next year.
So there being no other non-board member citizens here, we can move to old business. Shoreland ordinances.
Fantastic. Yep. I know it's been a while since we've touched these.
It has. So before, and I was not at the March 28th meeting. There's a few, there's still a few grading areas here, so.
Yes.
Can I just point out that we don't have the meeting minutes on this agenda? And I don't know if it's because this is shore land, but I thought this was a regular, and I just wanted to say something about them.
I think I accidentally, I think I accidentally deleted them when I.
Ah, okay. So I was assuming that we would get to the minutes, but, and I do want to, we should make sure to do them before the end.
Okay.
But if you want to do them first, if you want to do them now.
I'd like to do them first.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
At least I'd like to put them in the minutes first, so that it's easy to read. On the first page you say, oh yes, we did approve.
Well, let's go back to. Yeah. Let's go back to adjustments to the agenda and deal with the minutes. So, just for my edification, the last, the last meeting I have approved minutes for is the January meeting, is that correct? Or do we have? Because we have February, which I was here for.
We have to see where.
And then March, we have March.
The February minutes were approved on 3/28/18. Approved as distributed.
Great.
So you don't have a copy of them, and that's why you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. And the March 28th minutes were approved as distributed on April 11th.
Great, that I have.
Send you two copies, or?
You could send me a copy, that would be great. I would like to, I've been keeping all of them, and I think that would be, I would like to have final versions. And so the March 1st was approved on the 28th? Okay. So we only have the March 28th meeting to approve, is that correct?
The April 11th.
Yeah.
We already approved the March 28th.
No, we approved the March 28th on the 11th of April.
Okay.
But we do need to approve the April 11th.
Okay, which I don't have, but I wasn't there, so, so I can't, I can't vote on it anyway, so it's okay. I'll get a copy of the approved minutes.
And I, and I don't know if we wanted to wait to have everyone that was here present or have Bill to ask the question, but my comment on these meeting minutes was that we did have a discussion around whether or not these pens were going to be insulated. Specifically, I asked about Roxul insulation to address the noise, and it came back that there was going to be absolutely no insulation in these pens. And the intention was to be boarding during the middle of the winter, as I recall, and none of this has been entered into the minutes. And that was a major factor for me in deciding to vote against approving it. So, if this is part of our official record in our decision-making process, you know, I never, I realize there is some level of detail that's not entirely germane to the point, but I was wondering if that was something that would need to be captured.
It was against noise or against warmth, or for warmth, or both?
Probably both, like I could, I mean, I can't tell someone how to run their business necessarily if we don't have a standard in place, but to me, that just seemed like an animal welfare complaint waiting to happen.
I apologize for not having that. Can you suggest wording that you would like?
Susan, you are fantastic. I don't expect you to keep up with all the witty banter that's going on at the table.
Well, I try. Here we talked about noise. Would it be in the second paragraph? Or where, where would you like it and how would you like it to read?
I would just.
This is comments received from other people.
It was probably, I can't remember if it was before or after the comments. I just remember specifically asking if there was, you know, what insulation was going to be used, and specifically if it was going to be like a Roxul, which is a noise insulation. And that was when Melissa said there would be no insulation, it would be a plywood pen, and this is a winter boarding. So.
Yeah, because I know, I, I thought we were just talking about insulation for noise. I didn't go to the perspective of that.
Heat.
Yeah, and because she was going to be bringing them in during the day, so I, I don't know. So I didn't, I didn't go there.
Yeah, no, and I probably could have pushed that a little bit farther, but, I mean, we don't have a real clear standard anyway, so.
So we could say Plott asked about insulation for warmth and to mitigate noise. Mushrow said she does not plan any insulation. Is that approximately how you'd like it to read?
Yeah, that would be fine. I think that's a good idea.
But I guess the big thing is, are we going to be. It's not part of code.
Stan would be the one to talk to about that, and it was already.
But is it part of code?
It was already approved. Too familiar on the entire code, but I imagine for.
Do you know what happened with her, the repositioning of it? That code was going to talk with her about.
He found that it's 100% in the rural district, the slab, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
But it was not in the rural district, and it was going to need to be moved, but that was pending code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement will look into that, and.
It says right here, CEO Stan Walz inspects marshals. The cement slab verified the new dog boarding facility is 100% in the rural district.
Yeah, I told Stan, I think Friday, the Friday after this meeting, that this is an action he had to address, as well as just any other further permits that Melissa would have to address. Now that I think the snow has finally melted, the surveying can proceed.
Yeah.
So if it's not, if it's found that it's not 100% in the rural, does she need to come back to us, or what happened?
So, the thing is, kennels are allowed in the rural district, but they're not allowed in residential under any circumstance. So if there, so if there is even a corner that touches it, even if there's one foot in it, then it's not permissible.
So if she wanted to move it somewhere else on her property, would she need to come before us again, or can she just do?
If she plans on, I don't know if I, I'll, I can send you the map of what has to happen, but there is a map that was signed for how it would be structured. If she plans to have it in a different form, then she would come back.
Gotcha.
Even if it's, even if she moves it to another part of the rural district?
Yes, because that would be changing the site plan.
Oh, okay.
Because the way it was done was just extending off the current grooming business, and then the kennel would just extend out. But I think Barbara was suggesting, just on the right side of it, extending out, that would be a, that would be a change.
Put it all over.
Yeah, that would, that would be a completely different spot in the, in the property, so. It would need site, it would need another quick review.
So, the, on the minutes, do you want to, did we edit those in time? And was that wording acceptable that Susan was talking about? So we can, either way, or we can wait till the next meeting?
I think it's fine. I mean, it got voted in, you know, at this point, it's really in the hands of code enforcement, Board of Appeals and worst case scenario, or DAC, who is a DACF, will go in and license her and do their own inspection and things. So there's like a system of checks and balances where she'll have to, you know, prove that she's got a viable business plan.
Right, yep.
So, you know, those were just my initial concerns.
Because the building and the construction insulation, that would be the state, part of the state kennel requirements, whatever, whatever they have or don't have.
They put it back on the counts.
She has to follow that.
Yeah.
Do they really?
Yeah, that's what we found out.
Really? Well, that makes it so easy. Okay. Good to know.
So are we adding these two sentences or not?
I would like those two sentences about the insulation added for the record, just to say that we tried to address them for the purposes of noise or.
I think it goes in at the end of the first paragraph.
Okay, perfect.
And I can read it again if you all would like me to, if you're going to vote on this. Are there any other changes?
Just the one that I threw in there about bangers and buffer space?
I just have a quick question about the kennel, sorry, as I'm sitting here thinking about it. I didn't know if we ever, I know we do this, but I guess I just wonder why we're, why we didn't go out there and look at the property to see if adding kennels would be appropriate? And I say that because I don't know if anybody has been up there, but it's not a very neat or tidy or clean facility. And to me, if there's difficulty handling the five kennels that she has, adding 10 more to that, I know before we've talked as a board about how we want our town to look and appeal, and it's not a very neat facility. So I just didn't know if we ever go out there and look.
Well, and then it becomes, I think Barbara had made this subject, suggestion at the end of the last board meeting, as I'd gotten on my soapbox. Just going forward that we should really adjust our standards if we are going to see more kennel business or regulate them to a higher standard. You know, for this situation, I mean, because at this point, it would just be highly subjective to go out and, and not having any clear standards in place, go out to the property and say, nah, no. Because, again, if you can't tell people how to run their businesses, and people want to board there, and they meet all the applicable standards.
Are you suggesting standards included in the new comprehensive plan?
Yeah, we could include them in the comprehensive plan, because any language revisions, I think, have to meet the comp plan, right?
Well, it would have to be in, it would have to go into the zoning ordinances. The comp plan is just a sort of a vision where we're going. I didn't, I didn't. Well, but I didn't, I didn't see anything in the comp plan. I mean, we all want a nice and neat and glorious town, but I didn't see anything in the comprehensive plan that, that called for a, an, a initiative to clean up properties. You know, if we were going to have that, I have some places that I would choose on my own adjacent streets that, that, that we might select to do that. And then the problem is, what are your, what are your standards? And it's not our, and if it's not in the zoning, it's not our job to try to enforce, you know, to try to sort of impose those kinds of things, so that's.
So if we wanted it in zoning, what's the process for that?
Well, there's going to be a committee, as I understand it, to look at the zoning that we have now, to try to make it, you know, supportive of and in concert with what was come up within the comprehensive plan, and make any changes in the zoning that are necessary to do that. So, that would be the time through that group to say, gee, we'd like to, because then it's something that would get worked out and would eventually come, all these changes, just like these, have to come to the town for a town vote if you're going to change the zoning. So, other than that, it is, in this particular case, like it's, you know, if it's a business, and they're a messy business, are people going to want to, that's sort of the thing that's controlling now, I think, so.
Okay, gotcha.
Sorry, guys, the sun was in my eyes.
Got the sun right, oh, it is.
I couldn't seem to get it out.
Barbara, you arrived.
I know. You're so much greater.
But to answer your question on these site visits, you guys can do that, really whenever there's any application, just at the meeting, you'd have to say, we should do a site visit just because concerns you'd address. The thing is, it would then be, because one, two would be gathering there, it would be seen as a public sort of visit. So I'd have to just put out notifications to everyone so that, that it's not just us, but the town can go to it, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, we've only done one of them that I remember since I joined the board.
Yeah, only one.
Yeah.
But, long story short, we can do it whenever, whenever you.
And if there's an ethical concern, just abstain, correct?
If you, if you have a, I assume what you mean, if there, you have a personal matter in it, such as you run a butter to this?
Nope, nope, I'm, I cannot fully support a business that shocks dogs. I just, I can't do that, so that would be an ethical issue for me.
Okay.
So that would be an abstention, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that that's right, okay.
So, any other question with the kennel minutes?
So anything else on the minutes?
I have one on Dan Goldson and the office. I just wanted to have more, just broad sort of language. Instead of cowork space, I wanted to put in just, on office space is approved in the village district, and it.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I don't either.
Initially, the minutes talked about the approval was for a cowork space.
Yeah.
Which would require planning board approval. I just wanted to say, an office space in the village district for approval, because that's what, just as a reflection of the.
So does it say that, or it doesn't say that?
That's what, that, well, that's the notes that I put in there.
Oh, okay.
I can change it to what Susan originally had it as if people do not like this note.
So right now, it says coworking space, and you're suggesting we change it to office?
No, it doesn't. If you're looking at the same version that I have, second paragraph on page two.
Yes.
My version says an office space.
Yes, and that's, that's the note that I changed.
But the paragraph before says cowork.
Yeah, the one that was sent out originally says coworking space.
Oh, okay, but Max hasn't changed that. Did you mean to change that?
No, no, I think, is that the one, is that the first one?
This is the one we got in email, and so this is the one you printed off today.
Yes.
So this is your suggested change.
Yes.
But what I'm.
If you want to just show Susan what.
What I'm saying is, in the first paragraph on.
This is how you originally had it.
On page two, it says the space on the lower level as coworking space. So did you mean that that should be changed as well? I mean, if, if you wanted to be consistent and keep it in with the thing, then.
Well, no, it wasn't more about just the application itself, it was more just because that paragraph seemed more like it was clarifying the whole thing, and so that's why I just wanted to change it. It's a very minor thing, and I'm not married to it.
Here's my question, I mean, I wasn't there, but if, if when you were in the meeting, and it was discussed and it was talked about as a coworker space, then it should stay coworker space. If then this is added information about what's a permitted use in the district.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Max is trying to make sure that that's correct, even though it might have been a little bit less clear in the meeting. You're trying to make sure that what, adding this note of what is actually permitted, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's fair for this to still say coworker and for this to be, to say what Max thinks is correct?
That was just a minor suggestion I was giving.
Yeah, okay.
But if the board approves that, then the stricken material and words notes for Max ought to be removed?
Yes.
In the final?
Yes.
Do you want to do that, or do you want me to do it?
I can remove that.
Okay.
But if. So if, if coworking space, the practice concept, whatever, is not in here, then did we make a mistake?
No, 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 well, the words cowork space are not in the ordinance. However, a coworking space acts as an office space.
Okay, so the definition accommodates the practice of coworking?
Yes, and I think the definition was even mentioned at the meeting, if I recall correctly, because there was a neighbor who was curious what an office was to find.
That's true, okay.
So.
In fact, the minutes say down here gives the definition of an office.
Some memory I have.
Two, three, in the fourth paragraph on page two, starting Lawrence Allen asked for the definition of an office.
You're putting old, new information in all the time. You've got to get rid of the old stuff, make some room.
Up here, you're talking about.
Yeah, I have no room for new things, that's, that's, that's a problem. So are there any other questions or comments or issues with the minutes of that meeting? So are we, are we comfortable voting on, are you comfortable voting on the minutes with those changes? As we've discussed, okay, so can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of accepting the minutes as adjusted?
I can't see, Laura, you're abstaining.
So.
Who else is voting you're abstaining?
So three yes and.
Two abstain.
Two abstain.
Is that, is that enough?
It's a majority of a quorum.
Okay, it's a majority of the quorum, and therefore it carries.
Okay. So, and you can get me copies of the approved minutes, starting in February? Because for some reason, I don't, I just want to make sure I have the actual approved copies, thank you. Okay, so now, back to.
The fun stuff.
Sure, sure, there are no ones.
Okay.
Everyone's favorite topic.
Yes. Okay, so.
So the copy, so Article 10 and Article 7, the copies are out, were distributed tonight, are the most updated one after the meeting I had with Susan going over them. 10 should have no editorial notes, but 7 should have four spots that I just wanted the planning board to quickly talk about.
Okay, let's do 7 first, please.
Just for some clarification, so the first.
Okay, where's your first one?
No, if you have anything before 7, 8, go ahead.
Well, I don't know whether this has been resolved since my last, since we last talked about it, but in the land use in district table, and maybe it's been addressed in this new version.
What page is that, please, Scott?
Pages 7-2 and 7-3.
Okay.
One of my comments on the issues with the table was that, at the bottom of 7-3, it shows item, you know, superscript 2, definition requires code enforcement officer if more than 100 square feet, and superscript 3, in RP not permitted in areas or designated. So if you look at this table, I couldn't find any 2 or 3. I found 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, all these, all these that are referred to, like going over to the top of page 7-4, all of these superscripts are defined, but nowhere in the table. So it's okay to have those extra two things, but they don't refer to anything, because there was no superscript 2 and no superscript 3 anywhere in the table. So I don't know what they're supposed to go with. And I guess by, by, since we're all looking at it, that this is new, or it hasn't been, so there's still an issue with those. So I don't know how far back that goes.
This may be a carryover error, because.
I think you brought this up before.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I may not have deleted those because they were.
If it's, I mean, if it's, if it's a carryover.
Yeah.
From, from the existing zoning, Article 7, then. Hi, Barbara. Then, then it's probably just fine, it just, it might confuse other people, too. And, and I just want to make sure that there's nothing that is supposed to refer to those, that it's, that they're just not, that they're out, that they're not there.
I'll make sure of that one sometime.
Are the rest of the footnotes all right?
Yes, I checked, well, they all actually apply to something, and they seem to make sense to me, so.
So we're going to delete two?
Two and three.
Well, it's two and three, the, that's, that's fine, as long as, I think it's worth Max checking to make sure there isn't something that's supposed to refer to those. But it goes back to the, it's, it's also equally similarly incorrect in the current, in the current Article 7, so.
I may have left those in there, because if they were initially put in there, I don't know if there was a specific land use in the matrix that needed them, and so didn't know if they were, would be possibly reinstated.
I would not take them, I would not take them out in this, I think that's, I think that's the right decision, is to leave them in. So if we, I guess that makes it easier, if we find something in the future that's supposed to have it, we can make that, we can make that change.
You're suggesting not changing it, not deleting it?
Well, I'll, I'll look to see what, if these were ever really used when the land use was first created.
Yeah.
And work my way from there, but.
Yep, because it may be just have been edit changes to the table that, but that, that would be the thing, to make sure that there isn't something that they should actually refer to.
Because if there's nothing that this is referring to, I, then yeah, I can take them out.
I would, but I, I would, okay.
I'll.
Sure, okay.
I'll do research into it.
Okay.
So that was 7-2, 7-3.
Yeah.
So the first part I wanted to talk about was at 7-8. And this was, I believe, one of Susan's questions. On 7C, only native species may be used to establish the buffer area. The question was if this would include lawn grass.
Non-native lawn grass.
Kentucky bluegrass.
AKA Bermuda, or whatever, whatever, what they keep talking about on the golf tournaments, there's a, anyway.
It's a good question, because it's no, there's not duff to speak of created with lawn grass. I mean, it's traded as, if you use the word lawn, that's grasses, you know, I think that's the point of a buffer area, is the duff to slow runoff?
Yeah, which does, does grass even qualify as that?
Well, if it's traded as a lawn.
If it's considered a lawn, then the assumption is that it would be mowed and kept short?
That's what I'm thinking.
That's what I'm thinking.
Versus meadowish stuff or something.
And short grass would not accommodate the water runoff as well as tall grass, right?
Well, my understanding, for example, was that if it's in the buffer area. Well, my understanding, for example, was that if it's in the buffer area, for example, they don't, you shouldn't be bush hogging it because it's cutting it too low for it to be considered duff. Which means grass wouldn't, if it was lawn, it wouldn't qualify, right?
You can have a mowed path down to the water though, isn't it like 4 or 6 foot wide path? That's, that could have grass on it, so it wouldn't.
Well, that's true. It does, it does say the area behind the wall, if there's a retaining wall, is re-vegetated with grass, shrubs, trees, or a combination thereof.
Well, yeah, it doesn't seem like a lawn would include that. I mean, the definition, a part of a property or an entire property, which is not built upon and is specifically designed to separate and thus minimize the effects of a land use activity, noise, dust, visibility, glare, on adjacent properties or unsensitive natural resources. A lawn does not reduce visibility.
So, what's the definition of the buffer?
The footpath, not just 16 or 17.
Oh, sorry, I forgot the definition.
What is a herbaceous vegetation? Is that, is that grass or herbaceous vegetation?
It could have grasses in it.
It says the buffer must include shrubs and other woody and herbaceous vegetation.
What does that mean? Buffer, yeah.
Must include shrubs and other woody and herbaceous vegetation.
Yeah.
Could that be lawn grass?
I think so. Herbaceous is leafy. To be herbaceous, it's leafy and grass can qualify.
Many kinds of grasses, many, many kinds of grasses. So there's the first conclusion.
Right. But I, I don't think a grass, grasses would, would qualify to be herbaceous and for the most part.
Oh, meadows are herbaceous, I think.
I don't think lawns qualify as a buffer area.
What is it if not herbaceous? What is it if not herbaceous? It's vegetable material, grass. So what, what, you're saying it's not herbaceous?
What is lawn? What is grass?
It's not herbaceous.
We're getting deep.
What is grass?
It's not in the definition.
And that, yeah, we'll get to definitions.
Oh, that's, in fact, I questioned whether it shouldn't be. Add definition herbaceous, see Article 7, F20, page 7, 26.
Is leafy.
Oh, grass has leaves.
Herbaceous.
Leaves.
What?
Grass has leaves. My grass does. Doesn't yours?
My grass flowers.
Yes.
That's because you don't mow it.
I know.
Okay, grass, okay. Well, now we're talking, now it depends on how far back you go. So herbaceous is of relating to or characteristic of an herb, herb-like. 2, A, not woody. 2B, having the texture, color, etc. of an ordinary foliage leaf. But the origin is Latin, herbaceous, meaning grassy, like grass, equivalent to an herb. Grass and herbs. There you go. So now we're worse off than we started.
Herbaceous is grass.
Far be it for me to let facts get in the way of my opinion.
I was just saying, it says the buffer must include shrubs and other woody herbaceous vegetation. That's what it says. So maybe grass applies.
I was gonna say, like, I'm normally a fan of writing for clarity, but this seems a little bit like quibbling.
Yeah, I, I.
But that's what I'm saying, someone asks, does this include lawn grass?
I don't know if you've seen some of the shoreline areas, but the way the sun torches them, there's not too much growing past the trees anyway.
Well, my concern would be, and maybe this is off, but lawn grass, I worry that people will want to fertilize it. And that would be bad, right close to the water.
We have some language about, well, we have the language about removing things mechanically, but we don't have additional. Oh, we do have some language about.
Fertilizing?
I thought it had to be within D A C F standards or was that just with the farming? I can't remember now, we haven't looked at it in so long.
Vegetated buffer area.
What's vegetation mean?
So if someone needs to build, they're gonna establish a buffer area, they're gonna need to flush it out. Only native species may be used to establish a buffer. That's suggesting there isn't already a buffer area. So why allow?
Yeah.
Because I don't, because I don't, yeah, I don't think that's the intent. I think it's intended to be, you know, shrubs and trees and small, the duff layer that Bill was referring to didn't, the way he was describing it didn't, didn't sound like anything that you would keep grow to uproll to the ground.
No, and the way it's defined in our, in our binder, it's not. I don't think it matches lawn grass.
So.
So we could leave it out.
Marsha, you asked about the definition of vegetation in our ordinance. And this is on page 16, 27, or whoever has it. All live trees, shrubs, ground cover, and other plants, including without limitation, trees both over and under 4 inches in diameter, measured at 4 and 1/2 feet above ground level.
Ground cover above 4 and 1/2 feet?
That's if you don't mow it.
That's pretty good fertilizer.
Is there, is there a definition of buffer?
Yep.
Buffer area? Yeah, that's what I read before.
Yep.
A part of a property or an entire property which is not built upon and is specifically designed to separate and thus minimize the effects of a land use activity, noise, dust, visibility, glare, on adjacent properties or unsensitive natural resources. That's 16, 4.
Yep.
That doesn't sound like a lawn.
Nope, it does not.
Mm-mm.
So I would just strike that question line.
So.
Or you put, does not include lawn grass, to be clear.
Let's not, because it seems like, like we've already covered it in other descriptions. Buffer, the buffer must include blah, 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 only native species or blah, blah, blah. You know, it already, seems like it already is covered.
Well, you could u- use to establish the buffer area as described in. And reference the buffer area section, and then it goes back to looks like something you're going to have as a buffer.
Well, the native species kind of forces it anyway, right? There's not a lot of lawn grass that's native.
Grasses. So we'd just have to just get rid of the word lawn.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that could be five, four different types.
Yep.
Don't tell me I have a tick. That's why I'm late. I had to take a shower. I had so many ticks on me. Could you grab it, please? Oh, God. Oh, you want me to go to the ladies' room? Put it right there, I'm gonna squish it.
And that's why we want to mow the grass.
So are we deleting? Make sure we have a vegetation.
It's either native species or an invasive species.
Well, it's grass that they walk off, right?
Okay, so Susan was asking.
We're removing Susan's question from C on page 7, 8. Is that right?
Yep. Did we want to add to establish the buff area as described in definitions or something?
But that's assumed that if you don't know what it means, you go to the definitions, because that's true for any, right, isn't it? I mean, we've got a lot of terms here that you've gotta, sometimes you have to look them up.
Or we could capitalize the buffer area, and that would automatically make people go search for.
Well, I think we did that, we had that discussion, I think, because this isn't the first time buffer area is mentioned, so we'd have a lot of those to do if every time it was.
I just don't want to go in and say anything else that is specifically, but not to include this, because then you kind of give people the idea that, oh, but I can do this, so.
Yeah, sometimes the more language you put in actually opens up the door, because if you're creating a category and then you list some specific items, people can make the legal argument that because you listed some specific items, but not this one, therefore that one is not part of your assumption of the definition of that broad category. So sometimes it's better leaving it broad.
So do we agree we're just going to strike, does this include lawns?
So, no changes to this part at all, other than taking out that question.
I heard Barbara say, considering E, that a footpath may traverse the buffer, and I think Barbara said that a footpath would have grass. So what are we gonna do?
Well, could I, one place it suggested woodchips, but.
I, I have, this is, this is just my brain working, I think, or not working. But if you have, if you have a field that's out of control and you start mowing it in the spring, you're gonna have grass after a couple of years if you keep growing, if you keep mowing it. So I think lawn sort of, now I, now I lost my, my train of thought. Barbara, what did you say?
About the footpath?
Yeah. I, I, there's two different things. One is encouraging someone to plant a lawn that they're gonna mow, and the other is just mowing a field, a path through a field that's already there.
But we're talking about the areas near the adjacent waters.
But I thought, I thought we were talking about E, the up footpath going down, that you would mow through the buffer, duffer.
Right, which is allowed? A footpath is allowed?
Yeah.
Right. So you're saying it's, it's probably gonna be a bunch of stuff on the ground there, you know, not, you know.
So, so what we, what we don't want somebody to do is go out and buy a bunch of grass seed and, and do a four-foot swath down to wherever, and then mow it and mow it and mow it, right?
If it's a footpath, they, they're allowed to do it. Why not?
I don't know. That's, that's what I'm asking.
And they probably won't, because it'll be really shady, because of the other trees growing there, and they won't be able to keep the grass going anyway. So they'll let it get natural.
Not if it's a field that's going down to the water. It wouldn't have trees if it was a field.
Well, but those.
I hope that there aren't too many of them.
Right, there's not that many of them left. That's what the zoning, that's sort of a, you can't, you can't create that on purpose now. It would have to have been existing, right.
I think if it's agricultural now, you can maintain it as a meadow or.
But you'd have to, right, you'd have to, it's only maintenance. Anything that reverts back is then troublesome. Because I have, I mow mine, but there's, it's mostly moss with a little bit of grass here and there, my path. Because, because of the shade. The moss?
No, no.
Not recently. Okay.
Do we, refresh my memory, have we worked on repairing our definitions in relation to shoreline zone?
We have not done the definitions yet. That's actually something that we will get to.
Next.
Yeah, next. It should be in the pack bundle that was with you.
Okay.
So, the next note I have is on 7, 17. Has changed. And this.
Wherein?
15, C.
Soil tillage in excess.
Yes. So currently reads, or the end of the first sentence reads, shall require a conservation plan by the planning to be filed with the planning board. But Susan, I believe your suggestion was to strike out "to be filed with" and change it to "approved by the planning."
That makes sense to me, because if they file it with the planning board, there is no implication that the planning board has approved it or even read it.
I approve this change.
Thank you.
Was this the one that we had no control over, though? I just wanted to ask. Was the conservation plan something that we had no control over? There was, I seem to remember Bill saying there was some stuff that we just kind of had to let go. I mean, I'd be happy to approve it, but if it, if it's a moot point.
I'll check with Bill just to double check that, but if he says it's all right for the change, the board's all right with the change?
Perfect.
Manure storage. Who in town are we possibly harming by requesting manure storage be a little further back from our wetlands and waterways presently? Is that any, can you think of any where that might be a hardship?
Well, some of these, I mean, I'm just thinking of Dutchneck, like, because I don't know anyone specifically, but when they sold off a lot of the properties, they were sold off in splinters, so we're talking about pieces of land that are only 200 feet wide. So if there is a little stream that happens to be running on the edge of the property and you're saying 100 feet back, that could seriously affect something, so theoretically.
I wonder how often that's the case.
Probably, often enough to be the exception.
Well, I have a couple of manure piles, and I have a stream down below, so it would.
Can you do 125 feet without being a problem? You know, in other words, this is a state's.
Well, my property's only 150 feet wide.
Right, but we're talking about setback. Do you have a stream running along the side of your property?
Not as, no, but it's a, there's runoff, there's a runoff thing.
Oh, that's where that's coming from?
No.
So is this anywhere in town you're talking about, or is this just a shoreline?
No, great pond, river, anything flowing into a great pond.
Well, I have a manure, I have a horse farm, and I do have a manure pile, and I think if we went up 225, I might get into trouble.
I mean, 100, 100 feet from a, I mean.
It would be, I guess if it's already existing, there's that issue, if you've got an already existing situation, but.
But you can put a septic system in, and you can put a leach field within 100 feet, so why, why a manure pile wouldn't work either.
Because you're not doing anything with it, and you're, when it rains on and all the stuff's getting washed right into the.
Well.
It's not being contained in any way.
What a leach field does when you flush, right?
Right, but there's a tank first, and then it's percolating, sipping.
True.
There's, there's methods to mitigate that with a septic system. A manure pile isn't.
Yeah, depends on how old it is.
And, you know, they've just done all those EPA studies about animal manure in the river. So I raised this as a thinking opportunity here.
What page are you looking at, please Barbara?
17, 15, B.
It's the paragraph above what we were just talking about.
Oh, okay.
All manure storage within shoreline zone must be constructed or modified in such a way that the facility produces no discharge. Now, that's like a.
That would be like a commercial thing or something, yeah.
Yeah.
We just have a small horse farm, and, you know, we, we do have, there's a lot of little water all around, little, you know, here and there, and probably there's no place we could put on the property without, you know, getting involved with some small stream or some small something. And not that we're, the dam is behind us, but not directly connected to us, but you know, water all runs, you know. But by the time it gets here, it goes through a huge stone tributary. I don't even know what you'd even call it. It's this big, huge stone ravine that all the water goes through, and it's like a subterranean kind of thing, so.
Sounds interesting.
So, yeah, it's very interesting.
So it's a question of scale, really, right? You know, it's, we're talking, this, this talks about spear fire, or facility, it's one of those concrete pads with tires around it, I think, and all that stuff versus, you know, smaller operations, but the operations are, there's more and more interest in.
Right, all of our agritourism businesses that are really trying to take root here and, and.
Right.
And so does it send a more, what, what's the greater harm? Do you send a negative message by saying, okay, move your facilities, or is it just a quiet code enforcement issue, like, I go check out that place? Or is it just a quiet code enforcement issue, like, I go check out that place?
Well, this, you know-
So you're saying changing that number to 125 might be a problem? Like a negative sell or?
I have, historically, I have the perspective that making any type of changes that are more restrictive typically don't tend to make people very happy, but, you know.
Well, and I guess I wouldn't, I would like, I, I don't know that it's reasonable to make a change without understanding the relative value. Are we actually making it, is, is changing it from 100 and 100 feet to 150 feet, does it, does it add value? As opposed to the, some negative value? So, and if, if we're saying that, it says here automatically that everything, anything that somebody is do, is doing, at least the spreading, is governed by the main guidelines and nutrient management laws. So it's referring, there's already some requirements. So, I'm not opposed to changing it, but I don't, I don't think it makes sense to change it without having something to move to that makes sense, that we understand.
Well, the other thing that we need to look at is the sea level rise maps and that kind of thing. That 100 feet could soon become, you know, 50 to 75 feet for a lot of people for their manure piles.
Well, that's another whole, that's another whole issue. That doesn't, that doesn't change this, it's changing somebody's property.
So I guess what I would like to do is have kind of a running list of kind of questions because we're not gonna table everything, vote on everything tonight, right? So this is something we can further study?
I'll make a note saying to just-
We can keep it in mind.
Were you thinking we were sewing it up tonight?
I would love to sew it up. It's been a long time, we've had a lot of passes at it.
Have we looked at the sea level maps?
I've looked at the sea level maps. I didn't, there was, there was very little, well, it was a three-foot rise. And Waldeboro did not have much in the way of problematic areas.
It's been over 50, 60 years, right?
And do we have in 100 year storm?
We hope regulations adjust over the course of the 50, 60 years.
Well, the maps are, the maps are the 100-year flood plus the three-foot. The map, I mean, it was, does anybody here remember the guy that came and talked to us and gave us the, gave us the maps? The, the maps were 100-year floods plus a one-foot and a three-foot rise. And there were, there was very little in Waldeboro that I recall. There was a bunch over in-
Yeah, there's some towns that are more affected.
South in Bristol that was, that were pretty affected. But Waldeboro wasn't one of them. I think actually one of the more interesting areas, I think, in the whole town that might be first. But was still okay, I looked at it, my recollection is, is on Dutchneck Road, at the bottom of that, of the bottom of the valley when you pass Grossneck. And that was still okay with, my recollection is it was still okay with the three-foot plus the 100-foot flood.
What, what was okay?
There was still, like, the road was still passable.
I think the only, this area that was really in danger from sea level rising was the lumber.
Oh, the lumber place.
Because they're-
Stores is-
They're stored very close to the water.
So, but that's something we can, you know, if anybody doesn't have that-
And just, and just to clarify, because we missed our deadline to get this in the June votes, we could theoretically go through these final items I'm talking about and we still would have to wait until the September, November vote. So we'll still have a public meeting.
But we'd bring it to the select board meeting.
We'll have to bring it to the select board, we'll have to have a public meeting.
Correct.
This isn't the end.
Well, except.
Except.
If we missed the last deadline because we had a snowstorm, because it was at the end of trying to get it in. I, that, in principle, we, if we can finish this, we should finish it.
Yep.
And let the select board finish it and let, so it can, you know, I, I don't mind being early. I don't wanna let it drag, you know, then-
I just mean if there's one issue-
I got it.
Such as Barbara wants to point out. I, I can leave a note of that and that's certainly something that can be mentioned later on.
I would like to know how many people are really going to be affected. And I think to Scott's point, if, you know, is there any real value to this? Or are we just stating, yeah, we're, we care, we do care about our clean water because it impacts so many in our economy, absolutely. But is this just sort of, I guess what we would call like toothless legislation? Is it just to feel good because we put something on paper? And that sends out a negative message that we're being overly restrictive?
I, I think that's, I think suggesting it's just a feel-good thing is a little bit insulting to, you know, people who are gonna, we're gonna- I would like the opportunity to look at it a little bit more closely. I don't want, I'm not looking for a feel-good. This is not, the comprehensive plan has asked us to look at water quality support.
No, and I'm not saying that it is a feel-good, I'm saying, is it? Because if we're only, if putting this 125 feet in really doesn't affect anything, then like, why are we doing it?
Well, we're also, I'm writing this for time going forward. And there may be many more people who want to come in the area and have farms close to the water. So we need to have some guidelines for them.
Those people are, you know, three acres, five acres, they're getting smaller and smaller and more intense.
Yeah.
You know, everyone thinks that that's great. And also, jeez, we've got all this water here, too. So we don't wanna discourage business, but we could, this would be reasonable.
I think the concerns I have is, you know, the, when you get down to the wetlands, because of a lot, there's a lot of wetlands. And that, what is, you know, what does that mean, the wetland? And so if your land is wet during the summer or the, you know, say the spring, but it's not wet during the, when, uh, the summer, what does that mean? How does that, you know, where do you position your manure pile?
Well, I think they're on maps, that we've got, our wetlands on maps and then there are internal pools, too, which-
Which I'm saying, so how far are you going with it? I just look at my property and say, well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wet, you know? Most of the time, when, you know, during the summer, there is no wet. But during the spring, there is wet. And so if, if I wasn't able to put my manure storage like within 100 feet, I may not be able to find a place for it. 125 may be the breaker for me, 150 may be the breaker for me. And I can't imagine that there aren't other people up in the rural areas that might find that's quite difficult because there is a lot of areas that are, are wet but we're, we're not anywhere near the shoreline. And, you know, at, at this point in time, you know, you may just block anybody from having anything. So that's all my, my own concern is that I know where I live and, and I have 30 acres up there. And, and, you know, to, to find a place on there that would be convenient for me to be putting the manure pile and getting it there and getting it out and transporting it and those kind of things. You know, like we move it out, you know, we don't keep it there over time, but, but, you know. So I'm just saying that I think that I'm not the only one that would be in a situation like that, that, that I think it would be a hardship for me if we, well, why not 150? Well, why not 200? Why not 300? And then at what point do you say, hey, guys, we can no longer have a manure on, on our property, even though I have 30 acres of land, right?
So, I guess the question is, what, what, what should happen here and whose action item would it be? Because just, I don't wanna have just, well, we talked about it, if, if, if we really wanna address this or not. My, my concern with this, the way it's worded, if, if, and I don't, I don't think it, to me, I'd be uncomfortable with just simply changing the distance. Because there's nothing here about volume and there's nothing here about age. For example, I don't have, my manure piles are already old because I get them from somebody else. But there's nothing here about how old it is. Well, an old manure pile relative to any kind of effluent coming off of it and a new manure pile are completely different animals, so to speak.
Okay, so they're talking about facilities. So at a certain point, the state regulates at a certain number of animals that you have to build a certain type of manure handling facility. We don't know what that number of animals is. It may be, you know, people have a lot of, there's a lot of stuff we don't know.
And do we have a definition of facility?
That's what I was looking at, too.
But this, this doesn't even, this doesn't say anything. It says agriculture, this is under, so this is, this is under agriculture. And it says manure guidelines, all spreading of manure. And then B, manure storage shall not be stored or stockpiled. Doesn't say anything about, you know, it doesn't, the last line talks about a facility, but the rest of it doesn't. So it implies that anybody with a horse will have a manure pile. And it, it implies that it, that this, this actually applies to it. And I don't wanna, and if it doesn't, then we ought to make sure that it's, that it's broader and it's clear that it doesn't apply. That's why-
Okay, so we agreed that there's more research that needs to be done in that section.
Right, in other words, if we wanna change this, I would, that's my point. If, if we wanna change this, and it's just, if it's simply gonna be a number, we've gotta put, I think we gotta put some more stuff behind it. Because we need to talk about, if it, it should talk about the volume and the age and the sort. It has to have something more to it than just, if it's a blanket thing, I'm uncomfortable making it a larger number when it could apply to some cases that it really, you know, is not meant for. I don't, you know, so, okay. So how do we find out more about this?
Well, Bill probably knows.
I will, I will ask Bill.
Okay. So, maybe he could send something to us because if he doesn't have anything on it,
And also the Extension Service Office's office will, no answer to all of that.
Yes, we do have the compost, most knowledgeable composting person in the world in Maine.
That's true.
No, seriously.
No, I know.
It's a very odd designation.
It is an odd designation, but he is, yeah.
He's proud of it.
He's very proud of it.
Well, he should be.
I know.
They do absolutely amazing work.
I would also find out what facility means.
Goes around the world teaching, teaching people how to compost dead animals and stuff.
Who is this?
A guy at the, there's a professor at the Extension Service that-
The red hair, what's his name?
Yeah, I can't remember his name now. He's, they've done a lot of work and he's done classes around the world of how to compost, like, large, large amounts of dead animals as opposed to other methods of handling it, like burying them is bad for the environment. You can't leave them out. So when all of the chickens had to be killed out west with the avian flu, he went out there and they, millions, you know, they've done whales, he knows how to, you know. There's a lot of call for that, to actually making a good thing out of it as opposed to a bad thing.
Okay.
Right.
So, interesting stuff. So if Bill, if Bill doesn't know but knows where we could find some information, that would be great. If neither of those are true, it would be good to have something back relatively quickly so we could, maybe Barbara or some, if you're willing to do some independent study on this.
And maybe just a rough estimate of how many people would be affected once we know?
We have, there's no G I S mapping in town, I don't know.
Not a G I S, but I think when he, when we did comp plan meeting, he was talking about like even going out and counting horse owners or how many people are getting like some farmland tax exemptions or some, I've, I've got to imagine that's information you could pull in order to make.
There is a map with all the farm lands.
Yeah, so that would cross over onto shoreline.
So- Because I don't think it, I don't think this is a shoreline problem as opposed to tributary streams, but those kinds of things that are everywhere that, that, you know, become a restrictive thing. Because I think it's really fair to be, if it's, if it's with, from the river or a pond, having a restrictive number is, is, is good. The further away you get, the less of an issue it is, that's what I'm saying.
That's right.
Okay, okay.
And that's why I'm thinking that it may be certain areas that we, you know, think about changing that number. Anyway.
Right, so moving on, and I just wanna point out, there are four other items I have. And then once we're done with that, I was hoping to try and go through the definitions tonight, so.
Okay.
So I'm just mentioning that.
You're very ambitious, Matt.
I'm just mentioning that at 7:10.
Okay.
We've always kept putting off the definitions, I will try and at least touch them tonight. So the next one is on seven eighteen. This is actually detailing setback. So you'll see it's likely cut off. Everyone's there. Again, I believe this is Susan's suggestion. So the original paragraph ends, "Operations in existence on the effective date of this article and not in compliance with this provision may be maintained." And Susan, I believe your suggestion was, "Operations in existence on the effective date of this article and not in compliance with this provision, i.e. the increased setback distances, may continue provided that such tilling is conducted in accordance with a conservation plan approved by the planning board."
And there again, Tara's point is that she thinks we've been told that the planning board doesn't have the right to approve conservation plans.
I can't remember, which, there were pieces that I seem to remember Bill saying that we didn't have a whole lot of control over. So whether it was approved or filed, I'm happy whichever, you know, the way the cards fall.
Well, we need to verify that with Bill.
Okay, so we'll do the same with the other one, assuming Bill confirms this. This is something the planning board wants to approve.
And how do you do a conservation plan anyway? I mean, what's, what are they talking about?
Was that under the nutrient management law? I believe, I can't remember.
I think so, too. And I remember looking it up and it was, there wasn't really much help on the main site for this is what a conservation plan looks like. That's my recollection. Maybe I wasn't looking in the right place, but I remember looking and-
Because I remember we sent out the statute and then we sent out the rule and, yeah, there was-
So it was in there?
This is a while ago.
Okay.
We just sent out some of the language, because I think we'd all talked about it.
Okay.
The only other thought I had in, I have no preference either way, but we had just talked about not adding additional language, i.e. the increased setback distances. So did we wanna leave that in or take it out? Are we writing for clarity or letting people make their own determination, so?
In part D, are we, are you talking?
In part D.
In part D, yes.
You mean just, just eliminate that in the parentheses?
Well, it's, I think the i.e., the increased setback distance is not needed.
That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm, I think, I'm, I think that's what Tara's saying.
Because we don't use i.e. very often in this document anyway, so.
That was intended to be a note to you all while thinking about the sentence. I wasn't necessarily thinking that those words went into the definition.
Oh. I got you, okay.
Okay.
Perfect, perfect, we're good.
Good catch.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very next.
Well, what have we done?
We like it once Bill says that we can-
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna change the sentence subject to what we learn from Bill.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So-
So then, moving on to the next one, is the next paragraph. Slight change, similar to what we've had before. Sentence ends right now in accordance with a conservation plan that has been filed with the planning board. A change again would be approved by the planning board.
We need to verify, Bill has a bar.
Now, what would we be approving on a conservation plan that, that gets to the state?
That's what he's finding out, whether it should be filed or approved.
But if it came in front of us, what would we have to say about it? What would, what would we discuss?
Good question.
And that's what I, we'll check with Bill.
Well, and other, I think the same problem with the other section we just talked about where that exists is just filing, it doesn't make sense. So which case you just have to, it would just have to-
In other words, wouldn't it, wouldn't it just go in front of the CEO?
Well, for tilling, he wouldn't have any, why would it be a-
Well, he deals with setbacks and that kind of thing all the time. I mean, I'm in other words, if someone came with us for a conservation plan, their nutrient management plan, what do we have to weigh against? We'd have to do some setting up. I don't know what the framers' part would be. I mean, if it'd be like putting in a septic system and the septic guy knows where to put it and then the CEO writes a permit for it, what's the point of that being a B in us?
So that would mean-
Well, we'll see.
So, again, I will check with Bill on that.
Well, then it would-
Check with Bill on what? I'm not with him.
With where we are at, if this is something that's allowed to strike that and put in, approved by.
Okay, I'm with you there, good.
So the other place that the conservation plan was, came up was, was that also, was that, where was that?
A conservation plan was brought up in the tilling setback.
Which is, what's, what's...
It was on seven seventeen.
The last...
Fifteen C.
Seven seventeen.
This, right. All, yeah, fifteen, E, D, and C have both included the same concern, where we're talking about the conservation plan being filed with the planning board, and changing that language to approved by the planning board.
Yep.
And if it should be approved, or can be, or must be approved, then we need to know what the criteria are.
Yes.
Right. 'Cause they were supposed to file it with us, was already in the existing word, existing wording, so I think it's a good, so I think this is the right thing to make sure we've got down.
All right.
Good, okay.
I'm not, I'm not understanding what you're saying, Scott. Are you saying it's good to ask Bill about this?
No, well, yes, but I think making the change to approved by the planning board in section D, and doing the same thing in section E, for the moment, is fine, 'cause otherwise filing is meaningless, you know, filing is just, so...
And why wouldn't it be the CEO instead of the planning board? Code enforcement, and then it gets filed.
It's, this is just the language that it currently exists in, so.
So if we could change it back to the CEO, let's see what Bill says. We can change it back to the CEO, we can change it to the CEO, but it was planning board. Filing, 'cause filing makes no sense, 'cause if it's, even if it's filing with the CEO, that doesn't make sense either.
Why not?
Because you could just, you could just make a terrible conservation plan that's bad for the environment, and doesn't meet any of the normal criteria you would expect for a conservation plan, and if there's no requirements for having it be approved...
Isn't this a state thing that you get, a conservation plan, through the, I think, yeah? So it's like going to DOT, I mean, you know, we're not gonna argue about what they say about the highway.
So is the state, so when you, so if you have a cons, in these cases, do we have to go to the state, and the state would approve your conservation plan?
I, I have no idea.
Okay, that's the question for Bill, because if, if the state's requiring a conservation plan...
I know if we've never seen one, probably the state.
So, okay, this is, this is, we really need to understand this part then, right?
I'll ask him.
Okay. Because...
We can't call Bill now, can we? I mean, is that okay? That's not okay.
So I can guarantee he will not pick up the phone.
I'm sorry.
He will not be picking up the phone.
Oh, okay. Well, conservation plans, I think, are through the NRCS.
Natural Resources.
Yeah, it's kind of a...
Oh.
So the question is, are they, are they approving them? If, if they're approved by that organization, 'cause they have to be submitted.
Well, they probably have to also meet local ordinances.
Right, but this, but it would be reasonable for our local ordinance to say, we need to have a copy of it, so we know what you've done with the state, and what the expectations are, and so...
And the CEO could probably handle it.
Like one or the other, but as long as there, there is one, and that we know that we have one, but not be involved in approving it, that's fine. The approval process could be checking with the make, with the state to make sure that they approved it for all that matter. Doesn't have to be us trying to decide whether it's a legitimate, whether it's a good plan or not. Okay.
Which documents?
Yeah.
Yeah.
More documents.
All right.
Okay.
So if that's good, the next thing is just one below it, on number sixteen, timber harvesting follow, follows Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines. Susan, I believe you wanted, did you have anything on this section?
That was my question.
Yes.
Is this sufficient? Does the land use ordinance give regulations for timber harvesting somewhere?
So...
And if so, where?
The former version did, but we are now taking that section out, because we are following what the Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines have.
And that's too extensive to include in our ordinance, as far as summarizing?
Include that? My, I thought that all that stuff was taken out, and this put in there, because the state changed it, and if they change these, that's one of the issues that we're doing with this, is trying to conform it to state. If the state changes it again, we've gotta change our ordinance again if we put in all the wordage, but it might be better just referring to it.
Well, don't we have all the, like, you know, four foot tall, four, you know, two inch, four inch diameter stuff, all that stuff in here anyway?
That's not timber harvesting. This is, this is, this is, you're gonna go in and you're gonna har, you're gonna harvest timber, that's different from the size relative to the buffer zone and all that other sort of stuff.
I don't think we should bother putting a website on there.
Put in a reference to the website?
Yeah, it's just gonna change in fifteen years.
All right, so I'll take that out.
Well, and also contacting the Walterboro Planning Department?
I'm just guessing.
Is that you, is that what you want it to say?
I questioned whether that's the right word.
Do you wanna be contacted when somebody's gonna do it? Or is that, is that, should that be a CEO?
Is that anywhere in here, though, about timber harvesting?
Our old version had a whole section.
Yeah, the version you have right now, it should include what we have.
But that's not what we're gonna use anymore, right?
Correct.
So then that, I mean, is there any way that it could be like copied and pasted and put in here?
Probably it's not long enough or detailed enough.
The online description of... Okay.
Description?
Yeah.
So this is over two acres of harvesting, generally on shoreland.
I just, we're going through the process of adapting shoreland to fit our town ordinance, this joyous process that we find ourselves in. But here, we're just saying, okay, timber harvesting, go here. So any of this wording that is located in this paragraph just seems like you're taking on some liability or responsibility to either help people with their timber harvesting. So I think that it just needs to be really clearly defined. Either you go to the website and deal with the state, or we start to adapt our, our ordinance here to incorporate state guidelines. Does that make sense?
Yes. What I have written down before, I think this was in February, before we had last discussion on that, all I have written is, timber harvesting follows, follows the Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines.
Perfect.
And they do have to get a permit to, to harvest, anyway. Is that a minimum acre size they have to do? I forget what it is.
Sure.
So I would suggest that that should say, timber harvesting must follow Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines.
Must follow. Must follow Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines.
We're requiring it, not just saying that it just happens.
Okay.
Should we mention getting a permit? I mean, if someone was trying to find out what they can do in the shoreline here, how do they know they have to go talk to Stan? Or how do they know?
That's what I'm saying, I think this is too vague.
Where's the definition now that you have, the new definition?
Sixteen twenty-six, you mean for timber harvesting?
But is that the new one, or the, that he brought today, or?
No, definitions do not include timber harvesting. It includes definitions that I believe aren't in the definitions yet, so that's what we'll, so the definition that Laura says is one we'll still be using.
So it's the cutting and removal of timber for the primary purpose of selling or processing forest products. The cutting or removal of trees in the shoreline zone on a lot that has less than two acres within the shoreline zone shall not be considered timber harvesting. Such cutting or removal of trees shall be regulated pursuant to Article seven, K seventeen, clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
So, that says that there's some, someone would have to see this, go to the def, think to go to the definition of timber harvesting, because anything less than...
Two acres.
Two acres is not, is not timber, it's covered by clearing and removal of vegetation.
That's right.
So other than timber harvesting, so the...
So anything over two acres would be considered timber harvesting?
Well, and I don't even think that meets state regulations. Last I looked, there was like ten acres, so maybe again, just link back to the state definition, see if they mean...
Of timber harvesting? 'Cause that might be anywhere in the state, in, you know, I assume they have something for shore, shoreline timber harvesting. I mean, you might find, go to the wrong place, is what I'm saying, thinking.
Yeah, I think it needs to be a lot clearer in here. If we have something, somebody coming up to us, wanting to know if they could have, if they can do this, and we don't know anything about it, and it's not anywhere in our manual?
So Max, what would you do if someone came up to you guys, 'cause it would go through you?
So what if it said...
They'd come to you guys first. So what would you do?
Not necessarily.
The link, oh, fast. The link that was mentioned is the guidelines that we're gonna be following, so it's less of our responsibility, your town's more of the state's responsibility.
So if someone came to you and said, listen, I wanna do some timber harvesting, you would tell them to get their permission from the state?
But also shouldn't we be looking at that, to see if we can be stricter?
I believe I included that early on in these discussions, and I either put it in, or I had a copy of what we were following, and it was decided not to put it in.
Not to put what in?
Not to put in option one, which is what we are following.
Option one is what?
Option one for the state timber harvesting guidelines under Maine Bureau of Forestry. It showed that early on, when, in our first round, showed everything being clear, cut out, and I presented the paper showing what we were following instead. And...
So I'm just thinking, you know, if somebody wants to, they've got a plot of timber, right? Or they're down by the shoreline, and they've got all this timber on the property, who would they go to to find out if they can just cut it all down, right? And put a house down, whatever. Who would they go to? Who would they call?
But timber harvesting, isn't it, did I miss that? That was for the purposes of like a business or making money, so this isn't for the...
So if somebody purchased land and wanted to timber, and wanted to harvest timber, that's what we need to know, what the regulations are for that.
Yeah, so this isn't a code enforcement and putting a house in issue, it's like...
This is purchasing land.
It's a convenient way to put your house in.
Right.
It's incredibly convenient.
So, well, but, okay, so if, let me throw this out there. So if this, if this said timber harvesting must follow Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines, period. For lots less than two acres within the shoreline zone, no, listen, no, and the second sentence would say, lots, lot, lots less than two acres within the shoreline zone are, are...
I would, I would do it the other way.
You know, need to require, you know, should be covered, or covered by, I'm just trying to come up with a sentence that makes them go to Article seventeen.
But this is, this paragraph is about timber harvesting, which is a commercial enterprise, so all the information in there should be about that, not what it's okay to do, 'cause what's, you know, what's not included under timber harvesting, so.
Just applies to ten.
For removal of timber for purposes of selling, acreage greater than two acres follows Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines, something like that.
Yeah, it's not working. We can look it up.
Yeah, it does. Which one are you...
You know what I mean, you can't, can't just, this is all about timber harvesting, and that says it's certain definition.
It's the only one that's not logged.
It's for sale, it's for, it's a business, it's for two acres or more, so let's have all that about that, and ask them also to look, the Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines. Right, let me try again.
Well, but it's, it's legitimate here to require that if, to make it clear that if it's less than two acres, it's, it's covered by section seventeen.
There's already, but this is all about agriculture.
Yeah.
This is in the agricultural section. We already have in the shoreline what you can do with your trees and your stuff, how much you can remove in your shorelands and other parts of this document, for a regular residential or a regular piece of property. There's already quite specific things about, you know, you make your chart for your trees and blah, 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 and a certain amount of removal. So this is all about agriculture, timber is an agricultural project, product, so let's keep this paragraph specific to...
Max, did you want to point out that option one's specific?
Well, it is, but it's restricted to lots that are two acres or greater.
Yep. Or removal of, 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 up to two acres or more.
Original, original.
Not the lot size, but to remove two acres or more.
There was, I believe I gave out copies for what exactly, like...
On a lot that has less than two acres within the shoreline zone shall not be considered timber harvesting.
Right, but this is talking about timber harvesting, which is a type of agriculture.
Correct.
So let's have this be about the timber harvesting on two acres or more.
But, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that.
Oh, okay, well, I thought you were putting it in this, in this...
No, I'm saying that this has to say something about the two acre restriction, whether it's positive or negative. It's still exclusionary. It's saying that, that you can only timber harvest on lots that are greater than two acres.
Right.
So if you say timber harvesting must follow Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines, if it is on two, if it's more than two...
Well, it must be on lots greater than two acres.
Two acres and more?
Two acres and more.
So that means that we have to be familiar with that as well? 'Cause we would have to approve it.
It could be a CEO thing.
Yeah.
Well, and that was my point about are we owning any type of liability if we're saying anything more than follows state and main guidelines?
Well, the current zoning, their current zoning is restricting it to two acres, so I don't know why, I don't know why we can't do that. Well, it just has to, just has to say, 'cause right now it's only in the definition, that's what we're following.
I believe the state is ten or more, actually, so I think that would be almost more restrictive, right?
So option one, what do you mean?
Ten or more acres.
Saying ten or more, what do you mean?
I think, if I remember looking at, like, timber lots and things like that, it had to be like ten or more acres to have your plant, but that could be something slightly different from timber harvesting, but I think that was the process with a ten acre lot.
Yeah, that's, that's big forest areas, we're talking about property in the shoreline right now, so it's a different acreage.
Yeah, shoreline could be...
So the shoreline is very specific. Okay, we have all this specific information on the shoreline, right? And, and now we're talking about agriculture, and we're just talking about timber in agriculture, then why can't we just make it as simple as possible and just say timber harvesting must follow Maine Bureau of Forestry guidelines?
Right, and that was my point, was that I believe my, you know, been up since five AM brain was trying to recall the last time I had ever seen anything on state and main timber harvesting. It was, had to be ten acres or more, which probably would knock out most of our shoreline properties, but...
Okay, so we need to research that.
Okay.
Seven eighteen sixteen.
So for the moment, how about this? Timber harvesting is allowed on lots of two acres or greater?
It's, it's not a lot size, you're, don't, throw out the word.
It is a lot size.
No, if you can, you can...
It is absolutely a lot size.
If you have a fifty acre piece of property, and you wanna just take out two acres of woods, that doesn't mean you have a two, a lot that's two acres. You're, you're, you're removing timber on two acres out of whatever number of the lot size is, so the lot can't be in there.
Wait a minute, excuse me, excuse, hold on a second, though.
Yeah.
Let's, let's read the sentence and parse the English. I could be wrong. The cutting or removal of trees in the shoreline zone on a lot that has less than two acres within the shoreline zone shall not be considered timber harvesting. So it can't, if, if, if it, there's less than two acres... It can't be timber harvesting. It follows under this. So the lot has to be greater than two, two acres, right?
Outside of the shoreline zone. Outside of the shoreline zone. If, if that's, in the definition, didn't you say a lot of two acres?
Within.
Within, all within?
Within the shoreline zone shall not be considered timber harvesting.
Does that mean you can cut it any way you like, and it's not, the, the, the timber harvesting regulations do not apply in that case?
But it, you have all these other, you have all these other stuff.
Well, then it, if, then it goes to this other part of the, of the ordinance, right?
vegetation.
Other than timber harvesting.
On a lot that has less than two acres, so, I will, within the shoreline zone.
So, I take it, what I will be doing is getting the timber harvesting rules from the main state government, and I'm just yapping at this point, and, um...
Yeah.
Do you want this?
No, I already have it on the phone.
Oh, okay.
I think your laptop's the only thing that doesn't get the Wi-Fi.
Yeah, it's not getting it through.
That's strange.
Yeah.
I just think, if we, if we actually saying we're going to follow state of main timber harvesting rules, the likelihood is, we're probably not gonna have anything to do.
Okay.
Based on what I remember to be true, because they have their own planning system for what acres you get to, you know, harvest, and...
I will go and fish the exact language that Barbara will be following, and present it, or at least send it out, um, and we can talk about it at a future meeting.
Yeah, that one's...
Because my thing with that is, even though they have to follow the state and main regulations, if they came before us, because they purchased land, and it's now a new business or operating for a new cause, they would have to get approval from us.
They would have to get approval from us, but anything that they wanted to do would also be contingent upon what the state allows them to do, and we shouldn't also... I do expect that Max is very situationally aware of what goes on at the state and federal level, just because of the nature of what he has to do for work, but at the same time, yeah, he wouldn't necessarily want to have that liability of being misquoted for answering to other people's laws and regulations. Fair assessment?
Okay.
Do we have anything more, Max?
The last one I had...
Oh, hey, let me ask a question, please, while we're still on page seven eighteen. I noticed a while back, Barbara, that you said, "Add reference to website", and there already is a reference to a website.
That's why I inserted it, because there was that, this was after we had our coffee.
What? Yeah, but, but this is inserted, and Barbara is saying that we should add a reference to the website, and there is a reference to a website. Is it, is there a different reference that you want?
No, I was suggesting not, not including that.
Not adding, okay.
Okay.
Because I think it will change...
Because the, we've had that a couple of things already, where we had to take them out because the name, changed the name of something or whatever.
Okay, so I'll back at that.
We've got about another year for that.
Yeah.
The last thing I had...
Yep.
Is on page seven twenty-nine.
Okay.
This was, uh, four C. It reads, "All applications shall be dated, and the planning board shall not, shall note upon each application the date and time of its receipt." Uh, change to, "And the planning and development director shall note upon each application the date and time of its receipt."
That sounds good, yes.
That reminds me that we had a reference in that other page that we spent so much time on about the planning department. Is that a, is that the right term? Or should it be planning and development?
Planning and development, sorry.
Planning department is fine, okay? Thank you.
That is all I have.
Well, when it says "and", does it mean that really both, is that an "and" or?
Planning and development?
Oh, yeah, okay, nevermind, nevermind.
Okay.
That is all I have for Article seven. Now, it is, which, there is nothing else...
Except Article ten?
Well, no, Article ten, non-conformant uses. I don't believe there was anything left outside of what... After our discussion with Susan, I don't think there was anything left for the planning board to really approve, unless...
I don't remember, too long ago.
Well, um, if, if there's nothing to change about this, we'll just, I think we should just have everyone read it again at their leisure and make sure there isn't anything for the next time.
Which one?
Article ten.
Oh, okay.
Because I don't think we should try to redo that again now.
The last thing I had was shoreline definitions, which we haven't touched at all, and I want to try and get our way in.
Okay.
These, I believe, are definitions that aren't in the land use definitions. I'll double-check to make sure we're not changing any.
Because we had a whole bunch of definitions that we were talking about before they were changed to.
Correct.
Okay, so those are done?
So, for example, the, so, so the first one, am I just reading through them and...
Do we have a page? Is this something you've given out?
This?
You've got it, but do I have it?
Do I, leave, I, you have it underneath? Well, it should be, should have been given to everyone.
Is that, is that this?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be able to look at it while you're talking about it.
Should be, I believe, on the bottom of everyone's... Yeah, so, I'll just go through them and, and make comments as they go along. So, footprint, that is not in our current definitions. Oppose...
Question, where did we get the definition?
State.
State, so these are state definitions?
Yes.
Okay.
So, footprint, "The entire area of ground covered by the structures on a lot, including but not limited to cantilevered, cantilevered, sorry..."
Cantilevered.
"Cantilevered or similar overhanging extensions, as well as unenclosed structures such as patios and decks."
So, doesn't include, patios is kind of weird, so it doesn't include driveways or hardscape, but it does include patios?
Uh, it includes entire area of ground covered by structures.
When you say they're in the shore, shoreline definition specifically, we don't use the word footprint anywhere else, where we have to, like, when we look at lot coverage and that kind of thing, do we end up looking at patios? Do you ever use footprint for anything else?
Patios, yes.
Uh, do you ever use the word footprint, um, in a lot?
In shoreline zone?
Well, in lot coverage, or any other...
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea, because it's so general. Footprint, it seems like footprint would be used for other things as well, right?
Right.
So, do we have to make, is the footprint, she needs to be more specific, like...
There's nothing in our... Well, it's like a patio, could be like a driveway, too, you know, where you have a hardscape at some time.
Well, and that's why it says...
Did we talk about the hardscape? Sorry, I'm s-...
No, you go ahead.
Well, I seem to remember, when we talk about the hardscape, are we talking like the gravelly type steps? Because we...
Or stone, what, you know, areas, or...
I thought hardscape was impervious.
Yeah, that was my question, because that came up with a moose crossing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, that I would think would not be, I can see, we are pointing to the driveway, though, like a paved driveway, but then if we're referencing back to the structure, maybe it's...
But some people, like, say they have a nice, um, you know, cobblestone, uh, it kind of could be an entertaining patio, too. I mean, no, it's, word patio in there seems, like, it might be problematic, but, um...
Yeah, well, I said, probably they just really do not want you to expand much farther in, because some of the languages, I remember it was about expanding your footprint in the shoreline or the resource protection districts, correct?
Yes.
Um, so if you include the patio, and you make that very clear.
Right, but this is just gonna be put in our definitions alphabetically, and will the word footprint come up anywhere else, you know, anything else we're looking at?
Yes, there's already someone who is getting a building permit, because they are cre- uh, making a patio, and so they have to get approval or building permit, because they're expanding their footprint.
Bill said this was a better word choice anyway, right, because of all-encompassing volume of the structure or something, um, so were we gonna change everything out to footprint?
Everything in the land use ordinance, or, I suppose, we can.
Because you felt like doing that, too?
Yeah, why not?
Just for consistency's sake.
I'm not with you, Carol. What, what are you asking?
I, um, I was just trying to follow Barbara's train of thought on, uh, footprint, and whether it appeared anywhere else in land use ordinance, and then I thought whether it should be the word of choice, um, and whether that was a consistent word that we should use.
Well, it's a little bit like, if you have a deck, you can still have, um, water. It's not impermeable, you know, so it's a little confusing. You could have a huge deck that still allows water to pass through, and, anyway, okay. Well, let's just move on to the next one, we'll think about that one.
Any other comments on footprint?
Because it's not like we have a shoreline definition section, right?
No.
Footprint, it, to me, like, I, as I read everything that's here, it's everything that I'm going to pay taxes on, and I'm not gonna pay taxes on my driveway, but I will pay it on the patio, that seems.
You do?
As I looked at the assessment, yeah, there was like, really? You've been helping with patios at one point.
The nerve.
Is there, um, is there any way that we can change the wording?
You can change the wording?
I think that needs to be simplified. I really do. When we're graduating people that are several grades behind in reading, that's a word that is not very user-friendly.
All right.
What word are you talking about? You have a suggestion?
The one I couldn't pronounce.
Cantilevered?
Cantilevered? It may want to be simplified, I'm just saying.
You'd like to have it, uh, real phrase?
No, this is the first time I've seen it, too.
Well, it says "or similar overhanging". Would that, that would give you a clue, right, in that sentence?
I think dictionary.com needs all the customers it comes with.
But, yes, we're allowed to change wording as long as it's, uh, just as restrictive or more restrictive, as the state works.
So, let's see if, um, I like it.
Well, I could just say, "But not limited to any overhanging extensions, as well as unenclosed structures such as patios and decks."
Just delete cantilevered or, oh, well, similar, I guess.
And similar, and substitute the word "any".
Any.
To...
Any, not limited to any overhanging extensions, is that what you want?
Yeah, any overhanging extensions, cantilevered or otherwise. If you want a flat roof extension on your, you could have one.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think that definition is really gonna help anyone.
What?
Um, be more clear.
What is it?
No, it's, so it's fine leaving it out, let's, yeah.
Tonight, there was a spike in Google searches for cantilevered.
Yeah, right?
You know, I hate to say it, but I think it's a really, it's a very specific kind of condition, and, um, I'm not sure if overhanging extensions quite covers, does the same thing.
It's projecting horizontal beam, fixed at one end only.
It's just, I find it interesting that they put that in there, you know, that, that, you know, just to take it out, I wonder if this is what they really wanted, it in there.
Contemporary architecture doing a lot of crazy.
Mm-hmm.
That they really, they wanted it there, so...
But, um, is it wrong to think that if somebody reads this, and they come across a word they don't know the definition of, wouldn't they look it up?
It's being a little...
Hook springs eternal.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Do we have someone from education here?
Nope, I think it is thinking too much.
But if it has to do with their land and the use, and, and how they, what they're gonna do or not do, wouldn't they look it up?
But it, it can't...
Just being honest, no.
But it can't, but it, but it... Yeah, but let's, cantilevered extension, or an over, a similar overhanging extension. If it just says over, any overhanging extensions, it covers cantilevered or similar to cantilevered, and if, if, because that's the whole idea, is anything that's, that's sticking off from the, from the structure counts.
Only grounded at one end.
Yeah, so an over...
We can leave it, I'm just, you know...
No, I'm suggesting that it says, "But, but not limited to any overhanging extensions", as well as unenclosed structure. What's that?
I would not remove it. I don't think it's exactly the same thing. It's a really common architectural term. Con base, you know, it's being supported almost from above, like a roof would come out or something.
Yeah.
Not...
It doesn't have a post.
Right, but an overhanging extension...
It's not a really an architectural term, so it wouldn't rely, put the whole baby on overhanging extension.
Well, I'm fine with leaving, I just, I'm...
Yeah.
I would recommend leaving it at one end, yes.
Yeah, it's a strict definition.
Okay, that's fine.
You want to leave it?
We will leave it.
Yeah, I think we should leave it.
All right, so, that's it on footprints?
I think we went through hazard trees.
I wrote on this page, "Add definition of verbatim". Did we decide that we want to add a definition of verbatim?
No.
We have not talked about definitions at all, so any new ones have not...
We did not decide to add verbatim.
If not, no. Uh, but we can add that in later, uh, if we have a definition for it, so... So, the next, so the next definition is hazard tree. Again, we don't have anything on that. "A tree with a structural defect, combination of defects, or disease resulting in a structural defect that under the normal range of environmental conditions at the site exhibits a high probability of failure and loss of major structural component of the tree in a manner that will strike a target. A normal range of environmental conditions does not include meteorological anomalies, such as, but not limited to, hurricanes, hurricane-force winds, tornadoes, microbursts, or significant ice storm events. Hazard trees also include those trees that pose a serious and imminent risk to bank stability. A target is the area where personal injury or property damage could occur if the tree or a portion of the tree fails. Targets include roads, driveways, parking areas, structures, campsites, and any other developed area where people frequently gather and linger."
This is a lot of could, would, should.
Yep.
I don't like that at all.
What about, it might, the target area might fall into your neighbor's property, so it might be a good idea to remove it.
It doesn't, to remove what?
The hazard tree.
Oh, it doesn't, yeah, but it doesn't say whether it's neighbor or your...
It doesn't, but should it be included, is my question, as a target?
Well, it just says roads, anywhere where people would frequently gather and linger, so that includes neighbors.
Yeah, well, where personal injury or property damage could occur, so, non-specific.
It doesn't say yours, just yours, it's open, right?
Well, even if it falls into your neighbor's, it's your tree, but it's fallen on their property.
Yeah, so it's legitimate for you to remove it. This, this doesn't restrict it to only being on your property that the falling would be, right?
Well, it restricts it to falling on your house, your driveway, your, your stuff, but I'm saying if it's a neighbor's property, might be considered something that...
No, no, it, it doesn't say your stuff.
Would you have it as restrictive or more restrictive?
It's gonna cause harm.
Yeah, but anywhere, it's not restricted to your property, it covers neighbor's property.
But suppose it doesn't fall on your neighbor's driveway, blah, 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 but it falls on your neighbor's land. Should that be something they're allowed to?
No.
Or, or about to fall on your land, since it's just happened in our house, and, um...
Right, but the, the issue here is, are you, that's a cleanup afterwards. The issue here is, are you allowed to cut it down?
Because it's about to fall on your neighbor's property, is my question.
No. Not if it's gonna, not, unless it's gonna hurt something, right, by this definition?
Because the shoreline is all about not cutting down trees, so they're making it really specific as to what you can cut down.
It's unfortunate that we have to include this, because this is a lot like the other things that we have, that we talked specifically about not doing, because this is a could situation, and this is...
But it's a, but it has to, it's a, it's a, it does exclude, like, you can't just say, "Well, a tornado might come, and that would fall, so I have to get rid of it."
But isn't that exactly what you say?
It has to be pretty legitimate. Basically...
Normal range of environmental conditions does not include meteorological anomalies.
In other words, you can't say, oh, you know, like, a meteor might come from Mars and knock this over, and so I better get it, cut it down now. You can't, you can't make that excuse.
And who would make that call, that it is one of those trees that poses... And who would make that call that it is one of those trees that poses a serious and imminent risk?
Well, that's, that's a different issue. This is just the definition, the, the deciding is part of the, is part of the zoning, it's, it's in, it's where in here, it talks about hazard trees.
But who makes that call, though, who?
Well, he might actually, he might actually go out and look.
That's what I was wondering, and if didn't know.
Right, cause this is just defining what it is, that, the, what you do with it is in here.
Cause up in the rural area, you would just take it down if it's going to come down on somebody's property, because it's going to take down a fence, it's going to be a problem, it's going to take down somebody's shed.
Yeah.
Or whatever, because in the shoreland, they're saying you can't do that, because they're protecting trees.
Right.
Well, it's long and cumbersome, but it's, it's, it seems accurate.
And the state did it.
Oh, this is, so we're just accepting state?
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked, we have to accept this.
Okay, done. Well, let's, let's roll then, let's go.
Yep.
Let's go.
I actually appreciate this specific.
It, it does help, and, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's, you know, a hazard is in the eye of the older, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Cause the definition, it needs to be more wordy, because it, it's taking into account the tree and what it might do and somebody else's, it's, it's a situational sort of thing.
What makes it a hazard tree? Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this makes it a hazard tree.
Yeah, like what is grass?
Remember when they said like a paragraph?
And when grass is burning, what happens?
Wait, yeah, okay, let's go. Non-native invasive species of vegetation. Again, no definition for non-native species. Species of vegetation listed by the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry as being invasive in main ecosystems and not native in main ecosystems.
Perfect, okay.
All right, next is invasive species. Plants, animals, pathogens that are not native or alien to the ecosystem under consideration and whose introduction or spread causes or likely to cause harm.
Okay. Yeah.
There's no period at the end of that crew.
Noted.
Is there more of it?
For invasive species?
Yeah, is there something after harm? Or was there going to be something after harm?
I don't believe so, but I'll double check.
The comma before harm isn't something that should be there. Should get rid of the comma and then put a period after harm?
Well, the, the comma should, would be after likely, I would think.
Does introduction or spread causes likely?
But there's no need for that.
It was considered a pathogen. I was actually looking to see if that was in here.
Pathogen not in there?
Nope.
Perhaps the word is.
I don't think you have to have, I don't think you have to have everything.
Causes or is likely to cause? Is there an omission there, or did you take this verbatim from somewhere?
Or is likely to cause?
That sounds better to me. What do you think?
All right.
It's fine with me.
Yep. And I'll double check to make sure this wasn't cut off.
Okay.
So, anything else on invasive species?
Or, or pathogens? Or and pathogens?
Plants, animals, or pathogens? Is that what you?
I'm suggesting that a word between animals and pathogens makes.
Animals or pathogens.
It could be.
And or pathogens that are not native, not native.
Okay, saplings.
All right, sapling, a tree species that is less than two inches in diameter at four and one-half feet above ground.
But it's not, a tree species is the naming of them, right?
I agree, the word species doesn't belong there, in my opinion.
Yeah. It, it, couldn't, couldn't it just say a tree?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
No, no, I know why they put it that way, cause I think this is the state, right? Because if it's a sapling, it's not yet a tree. It's going to be a tree, but right now it's a sapling, cause if you, no, if you go to the one below it, a seedling.
Yep.
A seedling is not a tree, it's a tree species, it's going to be a tree, but it's a seedling, so that's why they use the word species.
So, an immature or young tree?
Well, yeah, but that's.
I apologize for laughing. Just with the, what is grass, I'm, I can't get over it tonight.
I know. But I'm just saying, if this came, language came from the state, where, you know, like, let's just parse the, you know, the atom here, which is trying.
Sapling, a little tree.
Well, that's, that's why you don't have to say little, and you don't have to say young, because you're defining its size by its less than two inches and less than four feet. So, that's already added there, so it's just, and then a seedling is a young tree, you wouldn't even have to need the word young, it would just be a tree species that is less than four and one-half feet in height above ground level.
That's a total wrong use of the word species.
I'm just, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
I don't think we should assume the state. Yeah.
Yeah, but I, okay.
I don't think it matters.
I don't think it matters, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying.
Can't we just leave off species?
I don't think it matters, whether we leave it or not.
Is this taking out species for both sapling and seedling?
Yeah.
I don't think taking out species is going to make it less restrictive, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, doesn't change the, it doesn't change the usefulness of it.
Yep, and finally, tree, a woody perennial plant with a well-defined trunk or trunks at least two inches in diameter at four and one-half feet above the ground with a more or less definite crown. And reaching a height of at least 10 feet at maturity.
And there, they don't use the word species.
Don't start this.
Thanks, thanks.
A plant.
A plant, okay.
So, it is, it isn't a tree until it's at least two inches in diameter at four and a half feet above the ground, it's not a tree?
That's what it's, that's what it's saying, but that's wrong.
I agree with you.
A tree is a tree.
That's right.
Whether it's a little acorn with a sprout on it, or.
A baby is a human, even if it's only that long.
However, this, this is.
Let's not get the argument going now.
Yeah, that's debatable.
You know, the, the point of.
Now, that should be a species.
A legal document can make its own definitions of words for the purposes of a legal document. And they don't, you know, the, the problem with the zoning is if the zoning, every time you want to use the word tree, that people understand it, but it needs to mean something very specific, that's not like really what the definition of a tree is, that's fine, because people are going to go crazy if in your zoning you said, you know, you, you, you had to add all this stuff or use a different word than tree than what people would understand. So, you know, I, that's why they do it, I'm not trying to justify it, I'm just saying, for, for a legal document where you, you're allowed to make a definition that isn't necessarily what you would find in the dictionary.
So, you, you got these from the state, you didn't just think these up or nothing else?
Yep, you got me, cause I spent so much time on hazard tree. You had it correct. And I know we were going to be joking about basic definitions the whole time.
Okay.
I don't know what to do with it, it isn't a tree unless it's two inches in diameter and four and a half feet above the ground.
Well, um.
They're all tree species, that's why it should all say species.
No, a red maple is a tree species and, and, and a, a redwood is a tree species.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't fall under the zoning definition of tree until it gets to a certain size, that's completely legitimate.
It's a twig.
So, it's, it's talking about size here, it's not talking about anything else.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Haven't, haven't we appeased you, Sarah, by removing species? Didn't we do that? Aren't you okay with this one?
Is there any other comments regarding?
It did make me happy, taking the word species out.
All right.
But the definition of tree is like totally backwards. So, um, with the, uh.
I stuck in the mouth.
Okay, hold on. Hold on, Barbara has a thing.
Didn't Susan bring up verbatim, are we not including that?
Yes, I was actually going to say, are there any other definitions people would like to add, cause I was going to add, or no, I wasn't going to add, but I think larva pathogen? I was going to consider conservation plan, and then Susan had herbaceous, correct?
Well, I was asking whether we had decided we were going to do that.
We, we, I can look into, if they have a definition for that.
Now, what about?
To, but, well, like, as long as we don't get into the trouble of it, it actually being counterproductive to have a definition of verbatim in there, because then you have to go and make a definition like this, which isn't, isn't a very good one, because it has to meet what the zoning is requiring of it, that's all.
Do we want to, um, I'm, I'm looking at lot coverage, thinking back about footprint, lot coverage here, it says, a percentage of the lot covered by all buildings, structures, parking areas, and outside storage and process. I just want to throw that out there. But I just, I am wondering about the word buffer. Is that, um, it seems like it's been problem a few times, is this a time to be attacking buffer?
Yes.
You mean, add this to definition?
Uh, no, buffer already a definition, but I think.
I know, but it's, it's not very clear.
Has the state updated?
Buffer area.
Do you know?
I think the focus was on these ones, because they were not included in the original ordinance, and these are clustered throughout the shoreline ordinance. So, I think that's why these were the main focus.
Yeah, no, I just don't know if maybe they had been updated, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure on updated ordinances, but I'll look at that.
That's a good idea.
Don't we use the word, yeah, here's the word buffer right here, vegetative buffer, blah, 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 blah.
Updated for buffer.
But, um, I'm not in it, but it does, doesn't jive with this.
The way it's used in the text doesn't jog with the definition, is that what you're saying, Barbara?
I believe so.
I will see if.
I mean, in the shoreland, it's all about the duff, of course, though we never actually use the word duff anywhere in it, and it's a good word to understand. This is the point of these restrictions. But the buffer here against waters is different than a buffer that we're trying to create between a, like a commercial enterprise and their neighbor. So, maybe we don't have to deal with this tonight, but we should be thinking about this.
I will.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we could include a definition of buffer in shorelands here also? Yeah, or, um.
Well, there's, there's not one that's separate that says shoreline buffer.
Buffer area.
Is it one, is there a shoreline buffer, not under S, not a separate one? I didn't think so, but.
There's also, um, don't we use the word screening?
Shoreland zone, okay, yeah.
Yes, oh, I suggested that it should be there.
What?
Screening?
Shoreland buffer, under S for. Page seven.
There's hope for humanity, conservation.
But then, but then in, in Article seven, we have to change buffer to shoreline buffer, because people, people wouldn't be looking in the right place. So, if we can come up with a, if there's a legitimate alternate definition, we should, we should use.
It, it's not there except in my handwriting, my copy.
Okay.
As a suggestion.
So, okay, anything else on that?
Unless anyone has another definition they would like to add.
Can we make a word?
Uh, you can do that, I would like to go home.
Okay. Before we do that, I have this in my file here, which I found, and I don't know where it came from or why I have, well, I know why I have it, but I don't know where it came from. This is from the state, and this is note related, just so everybody understands, this is note relating to timber harvesting standards. So, the Maine thirty-eight, four thirty-eight A provides that notwithstanding other provisions of the mandatory shoreline zoning act. The regulation of timber harvesting and timber harvesting activities in shoreline areas must be in accordance with blah, 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 Maine Forest Bureau, okay? That ordinance, that law establishes three options from which each municipality may choose.
Yep.
Yeah, as the state implements a set of statewide timber harvesting standards in shoreline areas, okay? Option one, the first option available to a municipality is the complete repeal of timber harvesting provisions from the shoreline zoning ordinance. Under this option, the Bureau of Forestry will administer the regulation of all forestry activities within the municipality.
And that's what Walt was doing.
And, and so that, this is specifically related to shoreline zone.
Yes.
So, if that's the case, then we don't need to, we, this two-acre thing is, is moot in a way, if we're trying to do that, we should, that, that part shouldn't apply at all. It should be totally, totally related to the main guidelines.
But that right there that you just read, I think should be put into the Article seven.
Yeah.
That highlight was, that should be put in there.
Can you, um, where did you get that?
I think it came from Bill or you, Max, right?
This is, this is what I was talking about, that I handed out.
Yeah, so it was a handout from meetings ago, okay.
So, this would be like an appendix or something?
There was a second op, well, this is just the rules telling the municipalities what to do, I think, not, it's not the timber guidelines themselves, right?
But it would clarify why we did that, or.
Correct.
Cause we had three options.
Yes.
Right.
Well, but maybe that last section, if we take out the two-acre ref, I mean, it just say, you know, maybe be more specific that follow, we're following the state, state rules, which is sort of what that says, but maybe it's not clear enough. So, there was a second option where we could retain some local control.
So, we need to see if the state would still recognize that definition or not, because that's just a definition, and if the definition's coming from the state, then that does still kind of apply.
What's that?
You know what I mean, cause the two-acre thing, that's, that's a state definition.
So, if we're repealing, we just need to say in the definition clearly must, must follow the timber harvesting definition of.
Yeah, so there was an option, there was an option two, that we could have some local control while receiving assistance, but then that gets more, that's more complicated.
So, who made the decision to follow option one?
Yeah.
Max.
Yeah, I messed with the definitions and I did this, too.
Close his eyes and pick number one.
I'll double check with Bill.
Yeah, I would just be curious.
Yeah, cause then we could have retained our own timber harvesting standards, but then it has to meet the state and it's a shifting target, and so.
Can you, um, you mail that to, I would like to read that thing again.
I would, too.
Send that out.
Yeah, I think this was helpful.
And what's it called, or what, how is it identified, please?
O-six dash O-nine six.
O-six.
Department of Environmental Protection, Chapter one thousand. That's what it says up here.
Okay.
Guidelines for municipal shoreline zoning ordinances.
I'll send up the text, cause that, I believe, cause if it, that's, if that's entirely Chapter one thousand, that should include some of the changes that we were.
Okay, cause this is page, this, page numbers are twenty-nine through thirty-three, that's what I've got here.
So, that's just a section of all that.
Twenty-nine through thirty-three, okay, Max will mail this out to us.
Okay.
So, I'll send that out, so.
So, okay.
Is that it on?
Yeah, I only had one other thing, which was in Article ten, we talked about this handy-dandy table, did we decide we can't remove it?
Well, no, I sent you a copy of that, like a typed-up version of that, you know, I never.
You did?
I did, I will.
I never recall.
I will resend.
You're in vacation, man.
You're going to resend what?
I'll resend a typed-up version of.
Please, I'm sorry, I don't.
A typed-up version.
I missed that one entirely.
Of Scott's proposed table.
Scott has proposed changes to Article ten.
An addition, not a change, just.
Addition to Article ten.
That I passed out before, everybody saw my handwritten, coolest thing, we can decide whether we actually want to remove it or not, it's only for clarification. Okay, so, anything else that we need to talk about tonight, yes?
For the purposes of the minutes, I am still unclear as to whether we have made a decision about the definition of.
We are taking out species.
We're taking out species and we're saying a tree, so that's fine for sapling and seedling, but what about the definition of tree? The tree has to be a certain size.
I don't think we should change it, it's a state definition.
Is this the state's definition?
But that's going back to, I'm sorry, Sarah, but that's going back to why it says a tree species and not a tree, cause a sapling, a sapling, that's a tree, but then the definition of the sapling that's a tree doesn't fit the definition of tree. See, the tree is defined as being a certain size.
Yeah, and Sarah and I don't like that definition.
Well, I know, but that, I know, but.
So, I'm trying to find out what decision this group has made, what I wish.
We decided to take out species on both of those.
And not substitute specimen.
Oh, I hadn't thought of that.
It's inconsistent. You've defined tree as being a certain size, and then you can't say that a tree less than that size is a tree.
Correct.
Because.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
So, we have to, so it's better if it says something, but Sarah doesn't like species and you're proposing specimen.
I think specimen would be a fine word.
Okay, instead of species under sapling and. Okay, instead of species under sapling and seedling, it should say a tree specimen.
You want to delete the word young also? It's just, it could.
Oh, it's fine.
Leave young.
I know, that's fine, all right.
All right.
Okay.
Because the sapling is young.
That's fine, we all, this is not easy, this is not easy.
Bill was the one who was gonna share, talk about the municipal climate adaptation guidance series, but unfortunately, he's not here tonight, so.
Maybe fortunately for him, cause he didn't have, we didn't have time to get to his stuff. But this was very interesting, and if you haven't looked at it and checked on, if you check on the section, the, the, if you look at it electronically and you check on, click here for chapter, under, um.
I enjoyed the road.
Under shoreline zoning ordinance thing, it has some interesting guidelines for the ordinance that I thought was helpful.
And so.